The board has been an executive session since six ten to discuss a confidential legal matter. We could start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll start with introductions for the board tonight. We have Jonathan Fishbein, Willow Bear, Meredith Moriarty, Chris Meyer, Christine Beck, and myself, Holly Dellenbaugh. Wendy Sampson is not able to join us this evening. And we also have Jody Monroe and Dave Hurst and Judy Keough and Kathy Johnston. And then I think we have a couple of special guests for our presentation later. I see Andy Baker and Nick Petracioni. First on the agenda is our approval of minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty board meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? And next, meeting reports, our superintendent's report.
Thanks. Just a couple of things. The first thing I wanted to let everyone know is that the Hall of Fame Committee did meet to review requests to remove Megyn Kelly from the Hall of Fame. That had happened earlier this fall. The committee tabled the voting regarding the removal of her as the group requested that Heather Cullen reach out to Ms. Kelly to ask some questions. So a request has been sent to Ms. Kelly's assistant in hopes of having a conversation. I also wanted to provide an update because we sent out some information about COVID testing. The end of the break last week to families to let them know about the different zones that the governor had identified, the yellow, orange, red zones, and what did that mean? And if you've been following where Albany County is, we have been closer to the yellow zone. Recently, the governor did announce some potential changes to those zones and clusters and how that might work for schools. So it's a little unclear what amount of testing we'll have to do, but just to provide an update. We do have approval. We have information from Albany County Department of Health to be able to use their lab information to test. We have ordered the rapid tests and they're supposed to be delivered Friday. We did that based upon the yellow zone cluster in twenty percent that we would have to test over a two-week period. It looks like there's going to be a little more flexibility in timing. One thing the governor also had indicated was that there's the potential that schools could consider pool testing as an option. Again, some of this is still up in the air, but we are looking at getting some outside help to help us with testing of students and staff. And we have agreement with the units, our bargaining units on testing as well. So we're relatively prepared to do testing. There are still some questions about the data entry piece and how that all works. But we will be ready to move forward with whatever that looks like. And I'll provide updates as I learn a little bit more about it, but that's where we are with testing. If I know that some people are wondering, we also are in the process, one other piece of that. We do have to get consent from families. So we are working with our vendor who does the COVID screening tool that's sent to families on a daily basis to use them for the consent so we can keep track of which families have consented to testing. So as we get in more information, I'll provide that, but that's kind of where we are with the testing piece. And again, things are changing every day, so I do think we're in a pretty good spot to be prepared for testing when we need to.
I have a question though. So if we have to do twenty percent testing and there's a lot of families we don't get the consent back from, it's not really going to serve the purpose if we're testing the same population. So how would that work if we don't get enough of the consent forms back?
I don't see that as a problem. I talked to a couple of schools who have already been testing, who were previously identified as yellow zones. And their response from families was actually very positive. And parents were very willing to participate in testing. And if currently the yellow zones, you do testing for a two-week period. And if your positivity rate is less than the community positivity rate, which is what is being indicated in all the schools who are testing is that there's very little rates in schools. It's the larger community that has the spread that you don't have to continue to do testing.
All right. Thank you.
Jody, I had a question about the testing also. Those rapid test kits come out of our budget, right? And we're not billing people's insurance for testing that happens on campus.
The rapid tests that we get from the state are free. So we don't have to actually pay for the test. We have to pay if, for example, if we're hiring a couple extra nurses or paying our nurses to do testing after school hours, or we've talked about doing a Saturday or a weekend where we do a drive-through testing piece, then we would have to pay that. That's not covered, but the actual tests themselves are are free from the state currently.
And you're telling me about the test kit is free as well as processing that test kit?
Yeah, it's a fifteen-minute turnaround time. It's a nasal swab. You put it in, I'd say it's not really an envelope, but a little card thing, and it turns color to let you know whether or not it's positive or negative. So it's after the fifteen minutes, you have the results, you enter it into what's called the Eclair system, the state database. And there's also an app that goes along with that system. So you can go in with the app. It's got a QR code. So it identifies who's being tested, and then after the fifteen minutes, those results are sent directly to you through the through that same app. That's that's my update. That's all I have tonight.
Great. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the board report. First, I wanted to say thank you to the BOU for offering their virtual presentation as part of their Talking With Your Teen series on coping with COVID. And hopefully that was helpful to members of our community. And I believe it was recorded and is available for anybody to watch if they were not able to listen to it when it was held. I think it was November eighteenth. I also wanted to mention, I don't know if anybody else has had a chance to check it out, but if not, I encourage other board members to take a look at the virtual calming space that our counseling center has created. I know you can access it through the High Schools Counseling Center page on our website. And there's a lot of nifty virtual tools on there for relaxing, animals and sounds and all kinds of different things. So kudos to the Counseling Center for putting that together because I have heard that a number of the high school students talking about they've been enjoying it. And then lastly, I just wanted to let everybody know that the Policy Committee, we were scheduled to meet this coming Monday, but we have canceled that meeting because there's nothing urgent to look at at this particular juncture, but we will be meeting the beginning of January. Does anyone have anything else they would like to share at this time? And next on the agenda is our presentation this evening on initiatives to promote equity, diversity, and inclusion.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully you can see my screen. So tonight, yes, we're going to sort of give a recap of where we are in terms of our initiatives to promote equity, diversity, and inclusion. If you recall, it's about three years ago now that we established our Committee for Equity, Diversity, and Inclusivity, which has grown to include over sixty administrators and faculty members at this point. We established a vision and goal back about three years ago now. And some of our goals were to create, maintain a welcoming, inclusive, and equitable school climate, recruit, retain, and develop a diverse faculty and staff, and support innovative, inclusive, and culturally responsive teaching and learning. And it's that last goal that we're going to sort of pay the most attention to tonight. And that's the reason that I asked Andy Baker and Nick Petracioni to join us tonight to talk about some of the work that was done over the summer and over the past few years with our English and Social Studies Departments to ensure that we are, you know, equipping students with, you know, an equitable, diverse, and inclusive curriculum. So one of the things I would like to mention is that, you know, we're all familiar with our core values now and our mission statement. But when you look at our mission statement, it's really important to remember that our desire to educate and prepare all students to reach their potential, discover their purpose, and be engaged community members. It's impossible to separate that from our commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion. So that is sort of on the forefront as we move forward with our work. So as I said, tonight's theme really deals with curriculum. And another one of our sort of action goals through our committee work is that we commit ourselves to work with our teachers to provide resources and ideas about how to create more equitable and inclusive classrooms by diversifying our literature, sharing varied perspectives of historical events, and encouraging open conversations among students and staff surrounding these important topics. And much of this work is really guided by sort of a TED Talk from two thousand and nine that was given by Chimana Ngosi Ndichie. And really, she talks about the danger of a single story was the title of her talk. And really what struck her was, you know, she grew up in Nigeria and many of the books she was reading were from Britain. And she had this picture of what British life was like. And as she began to read her own stories, they all took on the same flavor as these British stories that she had been reading, even though none of that was at all familiar to her. That's sort of the way she thought stories had to be told because that was the types of books that she was reading. So, you know, in the end, really, what the lesson learned there, and she kind of points to that, you know, at a micro level, there's danger in a single story because it prevents people from authentically connecting with others as individuals. And then more at a macro level, it's really an issue about power, right? So, you know, there's many stories out there about the dominant culture. So when you have single stories out there about, you know, the non-dominant cultures, that really threatens to create stereotypes and it just sticks to those groups that are already being disrepresented. So that is sort of the lens through which a lot of our curricular work is being done. This whole idea of it's very important to present multiple sides of every story so that, you know, people can have different perspectives and then choose to sort of make sense of the different perspectives rather than pigeonholing a certain story on a certain group. So I'm going to turn it over to Andy and Nick now, and basically they're just kind of going to alternate through each of the levels. Andy will speak a little bit about the elementary perspective for ELA, and then Nick will talk a little bit about social studies, and then we'll do the same for middle and high school. So I turn it over to Andy.
All right. Thank you, Dave. And on behalf of Nick and myself, I just want to say we're really excited and, you know, honored to be here tonight to speak to you on this important topic. We want to thank Ms. Monroe, Mr. Hurst, members of the board, Ms. Keough for the time and for all of your support in this initiative. So and I think this is my first Zoom board presentation, so with that, I will get started. Just to kind of give an overview of some of the overarching themes that we've looked at. And I think it's really important to underscore that this is certainly a work in progress. Our work has been, I would best best describe it as, I think that our work has been accelerated and there's been new emphasis placed in these areas and with very good and for very good reasons in terms of, you know, wanting to move forward on initiatives that we've worked on for years. But really, in the last six months to year, we've really put these things on a faster track, which is a good thing. We sort of have some overarching goals in the English department. We want to raise the level of different perspectives and voices in our literature and include, be more inclusive with regard to those stories that Mr. Hur spoke about. We also want to empower and encourage students to engage in discussion of, you know, sometimes more challenging topics that come across and come across in the literature such as racism, you know, systemic racism, diversity, discrimination, and all of that. We also want to, in general, promote, excuse me, promote more culturally responsive teaching. And to that effect, we're going to talk a little bit more about that later. I will say in terms of elementary through ELA, we launched a new curriculum this year that are part of our book study. This was part of our prioritized curriculum where teams of teachers developed units to to look at and study different texts at each grade level. We did this to, we did this for a lot of reasons, which I won't really get into all those reasons now. But we also asked our teachers to kind of, you know, look at trying to accomplish two things at once. We are really happy that we've included some diverse texts and, you know, books that represent different cultural perspectives within our book study books. So at every grade level, and I shared a few examples of those for you to see. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Nick to talk about what's happening at the elementary level in social studies.
One of the responsibilities that we had this summer was to take the magnitude of what we teach in social studies and prioritize it. And so the best thing that we thought we could do when I sat down with teachers is focus on certain things that find themselves in kindergarten all the way through fifth grade. And seeing things like citizenship and diversity became one of the dominant concepts that we really wanted to tackle. Unlike Andy mentioned, that we are spending a lot of time on finding resources and developing different perspectives and giving kids voices and demonstrating that Del Mar and the world is changing, and we have to do a better job at representing that change. So we're really focused on those three things. Community is a big part of it. Government is a big part of it. And when we have time, we add geography and environment. And all of that together is is a work in progress. The other, the other point that came up during the summer when we talked to past students is that they really felt like we didn't do a good job at being honest with them about some of the things that happened in history that we needed to really tell them or explain to them and provide more perspectives. And so we've done a lot more with indigenous peoples, Native Americans of the United States and of the Americas. And that's been something that former students have pointed out to us that they felt like we felt a little, we felt a little bit short. So we have spent a lot of time on that already. I think about the number of classes that I've been in lately. I can give you an example from fourth grade that we looked at a book that was written by, I think Jane Newlin, and it's called Encounter. And it really is the idea of challenging the dominant narrative behind Columbus. And they're tackling that in fourth grade. It's not something that's easy to do. Teachers are not struggling, but they're they're not content experts, but they're really doing a good job based on the perspectives that are being provided. So having another voice, having indigenous voice, telling a story from a child's perspective really matters to kids, and it's really been very, very effective.
Okay, so I think I also should mention, and I'm not sure by way of introduction, I meant to do this earlier, Nick and my role in the district. So I'm the ELA supervisor. Nick is the social studies supervisor, so that's why we're speaking to you on these topics tonight. You know, as Nick said, you know, we want to try to build these these themes and these understandings at a young age in students so that this is not just the work of the high school. When we think about, you know, some of the difficult and challenging issues that our society has to, that our society, you know, experiences with regard to discrimination and marginalization of people of different backgrounds and races. Those are not issues that the high school should have to tackle alone. These are, those are issues that we should be building in understandings and presetting students to build in that foundation of understanding and perspectives and empathy from a young age. So as we move from middle, or I'm sorry, from elementary to middle school, we continue in that theme. Middle school for the English department does become a little more specific with regard to the use of literature in the curriculum. And we have made very concerted efforts across our grade levels and our teams to incorporate more voices of diverse authors and present more different differing perspectives with regard to race and ethnicity and background and socioeconomic differences and all of that. Really too many to name in this presentation, but a lot of it goes towards the the inclusion of mentor texts with our with our writing, you know, writing workshop units of study and reading workshop, of course. It also goes towards some whole class novels that are done in middle school, albeit we don't do as many at the high school, but we do do a few. We also are very, very pleased to have been working with a lead expert in this field, a woman by the name of Harriet Grovner, who is just a very thick voice in terms of her expertise and her background. And she has worked with our teachers in incorporating more strategies to promote culturally responsive teaching. So we're really, really pleased with that work. I think we've met, I think Nick can correct me if I'm wrong, but my department has met with her at least twice, and we have goals of meeting several more times to, again, try to promote class discussion and deal with, you know, increasing the culturally responsive teaching that's happening in the classroom. Nick?
And just to add to that, Harriet's been really good at pointing out that we need to really look inside ourselves and look at our own personal biases when we're delivering whatever kind of instruction we're delivering. So that's been very positive, and the teachers have received her very well. The other thing that's important to note about the middle school in particular is that we really are trying, we're trying hard to really cross pollinate as much as we possibly can between ELA and social studies. We feel that there's a natural link there. And so I know there are several teachers that have been doing this for quite some time. Annie Baker and Karen Soffin have been doing this for several years now where they're looking at literature through a very different lens with with social studies as the historical context, but from a literary perspective. And that's gone really, really well. And I'm trying to, I can give you an example, like, for example, if they use something like, something you would understand would be like Hidden Figures, for example, it was a book that eventually turned into a movie, but they do a lot with civil rights, the Cold War, women, and science, segregation, youth movements. It's a really nice way to bring all of those disciplines together. If if you would walk into Annie Baker's class, you know, at the beginning of the school year, you would see a lesson on sharecropping, but it was more than just sharecropping because it eventually got into Jim Crow laws and the disenfranchisement of certain people in this country. And then it got into suppression of voting, and this is all driven by students. The teacher is just facilitating that learning. So kids are making connections on their own based on the kind of information and the images and the resources that we're using. But one of the things that we are working diligently on is trying to find the right resources. And there's a lot out there that are given to us every day, both for digital and print text and all sorts of things. And we've got to kind of navigate that. But teachers feel like they have a lot of resources to work with. They just don't have as much time as they would like. And that's something that we need to continue to work on. But the idea of teachers working together, whether it's Chris Holliday and Evan Harley have done a lot of work together from ELA and social studies. This is becoming more of the norm than the exception. We also use things like teaching tolerance in terms of documentaries. We use the Brown University Choices Program. So there are, there are other resources that prior students or graduates have pointed out to us that we really, really like. And so we're trying to listen to those voices and bring those voices into the classroom as much as we possibly can.
Okay, so at the high school, you know, a lot of focus is spent on the high school in terms of these issues. We have, you know, a broad range of students who have 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 asked for, you know, our curriculum to reflect the times and to better reflect the social diversity of our country and also to begin to kind of focus on perspectives that are not just from the dominant culture, but, you know, looking at history or looking at literature through a lens that's not through the dominant lens, but that is through the perspective or lens of a different point of view or in a different perspective, be it racial or be it ethnic or be it, again, you know, socioeconomic and all of that. And this has really been very empowering for us. We've, this is probably where we've seen kind of the most, you see the most response from immediate response from students where it's very exciting. And I have to say, I'm personally very excited at the at the at the work we're doing here. And one of the things we're doing to speak more concretely at the high school is our initiative has been to make, you know, make an effort and follow through on that on that effort to include more diverse texts and pieces of literature that reflect more diversity in our society. And as you can see, I just put a kind of a little smattering of titles and pictures of the authors of some books that are being piloted this year because what we're going to do at the high school in the English department is we're going to pilot some different books. And at the end of the year, we're going to get together and decide, how do we want to utilize these books going forward? We are committed to incorporating and expanding our literature to include these different voices. And it's really exciting because just the conversations that these books are going to engender in the classroom, I think are really going to put us on a better path towards creating more empathic students as we go forward. This is challenging work, though, and with this challenge comes teachers sometimes stepping out of their comfort zone and having to, you know, embrace conversations or have conversations in the classroom that do step into areas that can be, and I kind of am reluctant to use the word controversial or because I don't think these conversations should be controversial because I think that that connotes a negativity. I think that these are conversations that are difficult, but I think we want to empower our teachers with the tools to better have these conversations with students in the classroom. And so, yeah, they are challenging, but at the end of the day, there are ways to do it. And the most important thing is that it's not going to be perfect. And teachers have to, you know, we want them to buy into that thought. And we're making great strides in this area with the help of Harriet. So we're really excited, and I'll turn it over to Nick to talk about what's happening in social studies.
Yeah, there is, there is no question that this is not easy for teachers or for kids. We're trying to create as much of a safe place for kids to have conversations. And we've heard that word before, that the kids want, or our students want a safe place. So we've been working diligently and creating that atmosphere. And it's been a struggle for all of us because there's so much going on in the community. It's hard to tackle all of these issues at one time and try to finish what we're supposed to finish in the in the scope and sequence and the new frameworks. But we're looking at the origins of slavery and racism today. We're starting to talk about inequities outside of, you know, traditional southern, the southern part of the United States and look at places like what's happening in Del Mar and the capital region. We've talked about race and discrimination and privilege in a way that we've never spoken about before. And this is all part of these larger conversations that we're having with either Harriet or kids that are outside of school, former graduates or current students, those kind of things. We've also entered in trying some some new approaches to things. On there, you'll see Lab School English and Social Studies eleven twelve. Katie Leo and Meg Massett have done a really nice job at trying to create a course that really deals with anti-racist kind of topics and themes and using literature to explore those. And so they are, they're using Stamp, for example, which is a book that we purchased so that they can start tackling the issues of race in America. And kids are starting to read that or will be reading that. They've used the sixteen nineteen project and the podcast from that project to tackle the founding fathers and what they really meant when they, when they got together and mentioned the word compromise, 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 and how much of a compromise is that in American history and those kind of things. So we're working diligently at giving kids a voice, providing as much perspective as we can, challenging students to really intellectually get involved in a conversation that is much larger than themselves. And it hasn't been easy, but we're not going to give up on that.
Yeah, and just to kind of piggyback on what Nick was saying, briefly, you know, in terms of what it looks like in the English classroom, it really is about looking at things through a different lens. So everybody reads To Kill a Mockingbird, right? Do we look at it through the lens of Atticus Finch as the, you know, the white protagonist hero who saves the day? Or do we start to shift and look at that novel through the, through the lens of Tom Robinson and the plight that he's encountering in that novel? And just a shift of a lens in a focus on a book makes a huge difference. And this goes to what Harriet has taught us, and Harriet really taught us. Makes a huge difference, and this goes to what Harriet has taught us, and Harriet really taught us, look at purpose. Why are we teaching this book? What do we hope to get out of it? What are the goals we want to get out of it? And if we do that, we're not going to pigeonhole ourselves into just books by this author or that author. But we're going to take a broader view on how we can generally increase our cultural competence. So thanks, Dave.
Yeah, and I just want to mention one more thing that this is not really, we look at it from social studies, and I think we should look at it as a building as well. It's it's more than just one discipline. It takes all of us to really tackle these issues that our kids are facing today. And, you know, I walked into a an economics class last week and they were talking about gerrymandering, and the next thing I knew, they were talking about redlining. And then school budgets and how come certain budgets? I mean, these kids really want to communicate what they're feeling. And our job is to help them get there and to listen to their voices and understand their concerns. And tried to bridge that gap between ignorance and knowledge as best we can, and it is, it is happening. And and we're just doing as much as we can promote it, given the kind of circumstances in the classroom environment that we're in right now.
Okay, thanks, Nick and Andy, and I think one of the themes that you heard over and over as Nick and Andy spoke was the idea of student voice. And this is something that, you know, our equity committee. Really put at the forefront in that, you know, bringing student voice to the conversation, allowing our students to tell their stories, listening to what they have to share. And those are all very important components. But also partnering with members of our community to ensure that we're listening to them and responding to what's happening outside of school. That's going to enable us to work together to build a more inclusive, stronger community. So one of the ways that we are going to approach that is, again, in working with Harriet and Progression Partners. We have two different sort of workshop series that we're going to be offering. Each workshop consists of four one hour sessions. We sent out notification a few weeks ago, and it looks like as of now, we're probably going to be running three different. Groups for parents, guardians and caregivers, and those hold up to thirty people. So we've got about eighty parents, guardians and caregivers to date that have expressed an interest. And we've got just over twenty students and recent alumni, so as of now, probably one one group for that. Again, with the, we are going to send out sort of another call in the spring. We are, you know, we're looking to do these January, February, March timeframe. And then should the in this generate more interest, we could run more sessions, sort of April, May, June. But both of these work groups will be working with Harriet. Really important to note that the whole idea is that these are going to be both be welcoming environments for reflection and open dialogue. You know, the parent group will go more sort of into the science behind. Some of these issues and the student one really will be more about sort of having conversations with them to get their perspectives. And explore ways that they can actually take action. So we're really excited about this. They're they're sort of sub smaller versions of what our faculty on the committee went through. If you recall, our committee that met it on campus worked through, we went through eight full day modules with Harriet. So, you know, close to fifty hours worth of work with her so far. So these obviously only being four hours. Will just give a sampling of, you know, the depth of what we went through. But really, really powerful. She began doing these out in California. In September and has had great success with this, or we're really excited that she's able to bring this to us. But this is just one way that we're now able to sort of work more directly with students and families. To to get a better understanding of the work that we're embarking upon and how they can help us. Make this become part of the culture of B C and not just. You know, what it's become in a lot of places, sort of just an add on thing to do. It really has to be part of the fabric. Which is why, again, you hear how we're working, you know, K twelve to ensure that it's part of our everyday programming. And to Andy's point, this this isn't just an English thing or a social studies. It really does have its place in every classroom. I guess Nick brought that up, I apologize. Just, you know, obviously it it fits nicer into ELA and social studies in terms of the depth and the richness of discussions. But there's still certainly considerations to be had in all areas. You know, something as simple as when you're doing word problems in math, ensuring that, you know, you're using things that are culturally sensitive, right? Does it make sense anymore to say? You know, there there's so many males, so many females at a at a dance, how many partners can pair up at the dance? Right? So what does that question mean in today's language? You know, that came up not too long ago in one of our classes and the kids kind of questioned that. They said, well, does that mean all the pairings have to be male, female, or can they be male, male, female, female? And it's obviously something the textbook publisher hadn't put much thought into. So that, you know, these conversations do come up from time to time in other areas, not just ELA and social studies. So that really ends sort of the formal presentation. So having Nick and Andy here, I'll turn it over at this point for questions.
I'll start. I had a quick, oh, sorry, Holly.
No, go ahead, Willow. It's okay.
So just quickly, there was a reference on one of the slides for elementary school. All right, sweetheart, thank you. There's a reference to diversity units, so I just wanted to make sure that the goal is really a broader. Representation in curriculum generally in library resource materials, classroom materials, things that are on the walls. You know, the whole thing that we're not just taking out certain texts for Black History Month or Pride Month, and that it's the the goal is broader than that.
I'm not sure if that's for me, but. For sure, you know, our our presentation tonight tried to focus on some newer things that were happening. But of course, our elementary schools are continually and have continually worked in this area to broaden. You know, the different diverse voices across the school and to to include more different perspectives with regard to the overall building culture. And bulletin boards and curriculum and in every aspect of what they do. So absolutely.
And Willow, you raise a really nice point because we've been struggling with language a little bit, like what kind of terminology should we be using? And we've kind of approached Harriet with those things, and we don't really have a definitive answer for that, but we are working on that.
I was wondering if somebody could speak a little bit to the training that our teachers are getting to. Teach some of the new curriculum initiatives, whether it's in, you know, just using social studies and ELA. Because I'm, I'm assuming that we're not just giving them a new book. And saying, you know, go off and handle this, but that we're we're giving some training in how to how to teach these. Kinds of new materials.
Yeah, and that's how we're leveraging Harriet. Harriet's working really closely, which both the English and Social Studies Departments. They've met with them as individual departments at least three times now. We did Superintendent's Conference Day. She met with them. She's going into the department meeting. She's going to continue to work with them in their department meetings throughout the year. You know, she, it's interesting, she's she's really brought a a great perspective to our discussions. You know, she's taught English, she was a principal. You know, she's she's very involved in her community, and so she brings a lot of different hats to the discussion. And to Andy's point earlier, she really challenges people to to think about purpose, right? What's the, it it's not enough to just say, you know, hey, yay, now we're now we're, we have three books by black authors, you know, what's the purpose behind those books? And ensuring that the books are actually worthwhile to even read, right? Are they even at the appropriate reading level? Do do they actually tackle the topics that we want from the topic? Or are we just offering them because it's happens to be written by a black author? So she's really challenging the department to make sure that they're thoughtful in choosing these books. And then the Andy's earlier point, you know, sometimes you could find books that are written by, say, a white author, but just taking different characters' perspectives. Instead of focusing on sort of the, you know, the dominant character and their perspective throughout the story, focus on another character. And what their perspective might have been and tying that back to sort of historical times. So she's really working with teachers to, you know, to deeply analyze the text, which again is why we're not like wholesale changing everything, right? It's got to be in small chunks because you have to give teachers a chance to work through the text themselves, discuss it amongst themselves. Before you can just, you know, throw those texts out to students and and have meaningful discussions. I don't know if Andy or Nick wanted to add to that, but.
I mean, I just would briefly, Nick, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, I can tell you that Harriet challenges us to the why. We call it the why, like, why are we really doing this? And so we spent an hour talking about the Declaration of Independence. So if you're a a social scientist, that's great. But it really got into the weeds of that document, and it really challenged our lenses and how we approach. The beginning of what we would consider our curriculum, and it's it's going to be a slower process than I think people realize. It's going to take us time to get through. Every single unit, looking at the resources and trying to figure out the best way to do that. We also have teachers. Who want to do more, and I I can I can speak for Ms. Krishna Kennedy. Who has gone through a significant amount of training, who wants to start helping other teachers in other disciplines. Understand their their lenses and the things that they see their curriculum through is not necessarily in the best interest of our kids all the time. So we do have internal people that are really ready to step up and and move forward, and I think Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but. I think she's working on setting up a a professional development for two hours for teachers after school who want to start tackling biases and those kind of things.
Yeah, she's an approved trainer. I forget the exact name of the the program, but she's going to be offering that type of school for teachers.
Thank you. That was actually going to be my next question was whether we have teachers who are willing to help. Other teachers with tackling some of these issues. So that's great to hear. Go ahead, Christine.
And I appreciate Nick what you're saying about it being a slow process. It's something that's new and it's going to affect. You know, every type of class instruction, so it's got to be thoughtful and well planned out. And and I guess when I'm listening to you discuss it, it sounds like it's just like the initial talk stage, like where you're having Harriet come in. And she's having thoughtful discussion on how you can look through a different lens and. And remove some of the biases that we currently have in our programming. But I I guess where I'm going is like, when do you get to the point where you actually have a plan? Which the planner of the process is going to take even longer where you're going to say, okay, this year we're going to add. You know, one area, one content area to each class to kind of get the ball rolling. Because it sounds like when we're doing training, you know, it's an hour here, an hour there, or two hour, you know, teacher. You know, continuing ed class. Where, you know, we want to get the buy in from the teachers or get their biases to change, but really like. It's the direction of leadership and like, when does it become, okay, this is what we're going to do. Versus just the discussion plan.
Well, we've made several changes already. I don't want you to think that we haven't made changes. The work, the work I'm talking about with Harry right now. Is to ensure that teachers can properly navigate these changes and then also look forward to future changes. And we made a lot of changes in terms of titles that we've put in our libraries. The titles that we're using in our classrooms, K five. The the way that we're approaching different social studies topics in the middle and the high school, texts that we've chosen. I mean, there's several changes that have already been made. And Harriet warned it, you know, you can't change everything all at once because there has to be purpose, and you have to have the why behind what it is you're changing. So it's very easy just to look at, we're using these ten books, let's get rid of eight of them and replace them. But that's not thoughtful, right? That's that's kind of, that's the cheap and easy way of doing things, and she warned us against that, right? She said, yes, make make the changes that you know need to be made initially right away, that you can handle, and I'll help you work through that, but you know, but. The process of overhauling an entire curriculum can't be done in one summer. Process of training in your entire community can't happen over one summer, so don't try to do too much at once, because then what ends up happening is it's just. You have all of these things out there, but none of it's tied together well, none of it's approached well, and then people just get sort of. Fatigued by and say, what what are we even doing? Because nobody has any idea what's going on. So we're being very, very methodical and purposeful about what it is we're doing. And we're relying on Harriet's expertise to kind of guide us into what is the right amount of change in a in a specific period of time. And don't forget, we were supposed to be working with her on site this entire year to really help us embed this change. And we had to shift gears a little bit because she's unable to do that. So we're sort of out of order a little bit, like the the parent and the student workshops, some of those really weren't supposed to happen until next year. So we're sort of accelerating that. And sort of decelerating some of the work she's doing with teachers because they really need to be done, full day workshops, hands on, in person. You know, Zoom, just this type of work to do full day workshops just is is not really appropriate. So we did get kind of mixed up a little bit, but I want you to, yeah, don't don't take away from this that we're not making changes or we're going.
Looking more for like, what do we, what do we do in certain content areas, not like, do we, you know, add. At a book in middle school, did we focus more here, just a little more of the detail of what we've done versus like. The the overview, I guess, the high higher level, but I understand like this year we probably. Have slowed down where we were going to be because obviously we can't demand more from the teachers than we already are.
I I think I think actually the opposite. I think actually I'm really encouraged that we've actually been able to make the gains that we've made. Given all the challenges we've had with everything outside of.
Oh, good.
Today, and I think, and I don't say that from a defensive posture, I say it from a. I I'm kind of astounded by my teachers because, you know, we had a, we had a meeting in in June, we we had a conversation in June that was an hour long. That the purpose of the conversation was to wrap up the entire year and all the grading and all the COVID quarantine stuff. And, oh, yeah, also talk about diversity in literature. And I was just really, really floored by the way my teachers, and I think Harriet has mentioned this to me and to you, Nick, as well. They're real, they're they're, we're so lucky because they're ready and they want to do this work. And we're blessed for that. And so, yeah, to me, the buy in is going to take. I I thought maybe it would take a little more time, not that I needed to convince my teachers the importance of the topic. But to convince them of the of the worthiness of the cause in regards to moving forward quickly. So this year, we're actually, you know, we didn't say, oh, we're just going to talk about it this year and learn how to do it, and we'll roll something out later on when COVID's over. We hit the ground running with new books. We've got new books in our classroom that have never been taught before. And these teachers know how to teach these books, you know, to Holly's point. They're so excited, you know, we teach reading, we don't really teach the books. But the fact that kids are going to read a book that has a, where the protagonist is not white. Is just such an exciting thing, and it's incredibly, that's a small shift, and it's not a small shift. That in huge shift, I think is going to have a huge impact on our student body as we move forward, but clearly we have a lot more work to do.
Okay, now that's exactly what I was looking for, because I I heard from some teachers over the summer that they were actually working on curriculum. And developing things in their classroom. So when we were getting the overview, I didn't get that interpretation as detailed as you just gave it now. But I have heard a lot of excitement from a lot of, lot of teachers, and especially from like social studies and English. I mean, because that's easier. Way to implement it. So, but it was really good to hear your overview, and I'm excited about it.
My balance is trying to hold some of my teachers back because we've given them permission to try a lot of things, and they're going to do that. And because they want to really tackle these issues from a perspective that kids will start to really appreciate and understand where they are, if that makes sense. So the hard part is is trying to convince them not to do some of the things that they want to do. Like I can tell you on Monday, Annie Baker is going to work on something with W E Du Bois and Black Lives Matters. She's going to make. That connection that is, you know, over a hundred years away or close to a hundred and fifty years apart. And that'll be an interesting lesson, but those are the kinds of things that we've given our teachers permission to try. Because we're we're not sure what's really going to work and how long something's going to take. So if you look at the Choices Program out of Brown University. Those those units of study, the Civil Rights Unit could take us twenty weeks. We don't have twenty weeks to do that. So we have to pick and choose the kind of topics and the kind of resources or or primary documents or secondary documents, whatever it is. So that kids can really get into the conversation about the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty four, the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty eight or sixty five, those kind of things. That's where we're heading. So I I'm with Andy. I think I think somebody poured gasoline on teachers. They want to get moving and they're not afraid. They just, they want to, in some ways, they want to know that they have your support because they're having some really complicated and difficult conversations. In classrooms, in those classrooms, these kids are young, and in some cases, I'm not sure they're ready, but we're doing the best we can with that.
I'm assuming in the older level or secondary level, you're getting a lot of excitement from the students. I would imagine with some of the topics, because we have, you know, a lot of kids who participate in these type of movements, so.
And that safe environment for for them is really, really important. I will say, we also have a class, we haven't talked about it, but we have a class called Race, Gender and Identity. Taught by Ms. Krishna Kennedy, that kids really, really enjoy, and this is the whole foundation of what we're talking about. Is done in that class, and it's done for twenty weeks, and the kids get a lot out of it. I got a lot of emails this summer about how thankful students were for Ms. Krishna. Students were for Ms. Krishna and opening up those doors for those conversations that they were having. Because now they're going to college or they're talking to their parents and they're in the community. They have a real good sense of what's going on in America because of that course.
Great. Thank you.
Nick, I had a question about um. Our teaching of world history, um, are we? Making an effort to look at countries where we have traditionally not. Taught as much, you know, when I think of the traditional world history. Classes, I think, you know, we learn about Rome, but we don't necessarily learn about different countries in Africa. And um, I was wondering if we are making an effort to to teach a more diverse history of our world and if so. Are we going to have any problems um with the Regents exams or the AP exams considering how tight um. Our curriculum is this year because of the time restraints because of COVID.
That's a, you you asked a really complicated question. So when you think about, if I can explain it this way. In third grade, they start studying cultures around the world. And yes, we are tackling. Other, you know, Kenya, for example, is one of the countries that we've chosen as a as an area of study in the Bosi site. But so is China and Brazil and places like that. The question is whether teachers can really get to those in 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 the timeframe that they have and the instructional period that they have. I'm not really worried about the Regents exam as much as the teachers are. I think we do an incredible job in social studies, getting kids ready for those exams and our scores certainly indicate that. The issue for us this year is not having as much instructional contact time as we've had in the past and these exams are a little bit earlier. Than usual. I don't think people understand this, but the Regents exam in eleventh grade will be, I think it's June second or fifth. Which is two to three weeks earlier than we've taken it ever before. So. There's no question that we we are tackling these issues. I can give you an example from like third grade that I just had a conversation with a teacher about instead of doing. They were trying to do something with Thanksgiving and he realized right away that Thanksgiving, the stories, the traditional stories that we're teaching. Is probably not what we should be doing in third grade. So he looked at festivals around the world and harvests around the world during this timeframe. That was a great use of time and kids, and there was a kid from India. Or, you know, in class and they really focused on that particular child's country. And the emails that 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 teacher received from the parents because their. Their culture and their religion and their celebrations were were celebrated by their classmates has gone a long, long way, if that makes any sense. So that was a real positive experience with kids in that particular classroom. I don't know if that helps answer. It is a pretty complicated question.
Absolutely, absolutely. And then I just wanted to jump in on on Willow's point and I I believe Andy, you mentioned it as well, just to ensure that. Especially for our youngest readers. That um. We aren't focusing only on issue titles, you know, titles that, of course, titles that deal with diversity and racism, discrimination. Those are important topics to introduce to young, to our young uh students. But I also want to make sure that just generally our literature reflects the diversity of our world, like, you know, our books about superheroes. Should have black superheroes, you know. Asian princesses, you know, I'm thinking of. Zoe and Sassafras series and the Katie Wu series, Ada Twist Scientist, you know, I just want to make sure that the actual books. That are available to the kids and for. You know, teacher read alouds, just generally um reflect the diversity of our world and um. As Willow said, are not just merely um about issues, you know, and difficulty that we really. Celebrate all of our um characters in in literature. So um, but I think you already spoke to that, so I appreciate it.
Just like a couple of things. One, um, just a comment. I think it's really amazing that, you know. Ten or fifteen years ago, if we were having this conversation, it would be controversial. You know, it would be like, whoa, what's Bethland doing? They're stepping out and, you know, and today. It's not, it's not controversial, it's necessary, like, we need to do this. It it's not a, should we? It's, we need to. So that's fantastic. Uh, the second thing, just something that I struggled with as a teacher and it sounds like we're doing it and so I think it's good. So I'm not assuming that we're not, it sounds like from what Nick was saying, that we really are in social studies. But just making sure that we connect everything to today because, you know, something that I struggled with. Teaching is like, we say that Columbus was bad to the natives and we we talk about it and then we talk about how. Most were expansion of the natives, where 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 Native Americans were poorly treated. And then it's kind of like. Well, I guess it must be good today because, you know, we don't talk about it anymore, so that problem's gone, you know, Native Americans must be super duper happy, you know, or that. You know, that I I talk about African Americans, you know, that it was bad that Lincoln and Martin Luther King Junior came in and saved the day and. You know, gosh, golly gee, we're good. So it's just the ability of us to connect it to to where we are today, you know. You know, it's like finding things like, you know, um. The facts that like the Iroquois National Lacrosse Team didn't almost get into the World Games because the 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 world didn't recognize them as a people as as a separate nation. You know, th- these things are still going on in twenty twenty, so it's that ability to. To do what we're doing, which is really good in terms of talking about these things, that not leaving the kids hanging and saying, well, we solved it. No, no, we didn't solve it. It's still here and just making sure we add that last piece in to everything that we do.
Chris, you're absolutely right. I mean, we are doing as much as we possibly can to connect it to what's happening today. One of the things that was not mentioned today is that we are still continually meeting with um graduates of Bethlehem kids that. You know, when they come back from home, there are some of these kids who are really active in our community and they've been great. And I know our teachers, both English and social studies. Have private meetings with them with Zoom. I know I've sat on those meetings before. We've talked about indigenous peoples quite a bit because they really feel like we didn't, we haven't done a great job with that. And I can tell you, our fourth grade teachers. Are doing really, really well with with that topic. In fact, one of them. Lacrosse is kind of near to my heart, for those of you who don't know me, but I've already talked to a couple of female athletes over at SUNY Albany who are Native American indigenous population. And I want them to zoom in with our classes. The only problem right now is they're back home and. And it's a little harder to do that with their schedules and stuff like that, but at some point, we're going to connect, you know. College kids with our elementary kids to talk about what it's like to be someone um. Who is not considered American in some ways. I know that sounds awful to say. Because there is a sovereignty issue, there's a reservation issue, whether it's ancestral lands or reservations. There's a lot of terminology here that some tribes like and some tribes don't. It gets really, really complicated, but I think our kids want to have that conversation. And they would love to interview someone who um comes from a very different background and yet lives in the United States of America, but yet does not have the freedoms. As some of our children have, if that makes sense. So that's a real positive. And we're trying to do that with a lot of other things too as well.
I mean, because I think you're absolutely right. The kids love this stuff. They like, they 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 want to talk about these things. You know, we're like, so I think sometimes as the as the older people were like, I don't know, but like, they they really want to dive into this. They find it fascinating. You know, we looked at my class this year, we looked at, you know, they the the Royal Museum, the Royal Museum for Central Africa. It's in Belgium, like, how did it get there? Like, why, why is all of that stuff there? What's the history that makes it? How how did that happen? You know, and so the kids are fascinated by these things and and it's just that connection today makes it so much more powerful.
I'm going to be quiet because Chris and I can talk about this or we're blue in the face because that has a lot to do with imperialism, by the way, but um, but you get what I'm saying.
Yeah, we we can have our nerd convention later on. We'll do it. Don't worry. We'll get together.
Uh colonization of the Congo by King Leopold of Belgium for. Years, right? Is that what that?
Um, I had one other question, which was. With respect to some of the the changes in incorporating diversity, are we looking also at other kinds of diversity? In our curriculum, K twelve, I'm thinking specifically about um more diversity with respect to gender and sexuality.
Yeah, I touched upon that briefly, but not long enough, obviously. Um. You know, I think you saw that's with some of the the books that were um. That the board donated back to the libraries um recently. Um, yes, we've. One of our units, um, I'm trying, I can't remember the grade level, deals with families and I I sat in on a um. The reading and writing unit for it last year in one of the classrooms and the teacher did a great job about presenting a book that dealt with, you know, sort of in. What would be considered a non-traditional family, I guess, and talking about. Not being afraid to celebrate your family no matter what it looks like. And the kids went around the room and shared. Um, what their families looked like and they're all so proud. Um, about, you know, I live at home just with my grandma and someone else, I have two moms and someone else. Lived with both grandparents and they were just so proud to talk about their families. And I don't think you could have done that ten years ago, right? Um. I think kids, this is just, you know, we say non-traditional, but that this, that is what families are now, so. I I I think it's just really exciting that kids, they don't think of it as being different. They 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 like to read stories. And it's not different to them. It's um, it's natural to read stories about um non-traditional families. There's probably a better term, but that's. All that's coming to my mind right now. Um. And um. Yeah, we also, I should have mentioned that we did a lot of work with um Lyndon Kudlitz on L B L, yeah, LGBTQ issues. He did trainings with our middle and high school faculty two years ago now. Um, and elementary faculty last year, um, just really again, talking about. You know, how to approach students um. In in difficult conversations around that, especially at the high school level and middle school level, where several students. That have different preferred names. Sometimes their parents know, sometimes they don't. How to approach that? What do you do when you you call the student by the wrong name and he just kept reassuring us that it's it's okay. As long as, you know, when they correct you, you make an attempt to change the next time, right? It's it's when you repeatedly don't make changes. So I just giving faculty the assurance that it's okay to make mistakes. Um, it's okay to bring different texts into the classroom and have conversations about kids and you may. You may fumble through some things, but. Students will appreciate that you're 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 attempting to have these conversations as opposed to just sort of hiding behind. This is too difficult to talk about, so we're just not going to do it. And and it's hard, but the the kids really do appreciate um teachers um taking on topics that are not comfortable. That are not necessarily familiar to them, but still willing to have those conversations with um the students.
Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't getting lost in the rest of the conversation and the change.
And that's, that's actually one of the reasons we chose to work with Harriet initially. Um, some of the other groups we're looking at, we're solely focused on um issues of race. Um, Harriet is very much. You know, talked about diversity and eco socio-economic diversity, um gender diversity, um ethnic diversity. It's really about just. You know, her whole focus really is on, you know, sort of dominant culture versus non-dominant culture. So regardless of what what it is you're talking about, making sure you're equitable um in your treatment of different cultures.
I don't want to cut off the conversation. Did anybody else have any other questions? Dave, do you think, would it be possible to put some of this information um in a place that's easy to find on our website?
Yeah, we started, we started to work on a dedicated website towards the end of last year and then. Things kind of fell apart for us and our website focus was on COVID, not um.
Sure.
Committee for Equity, Diversity and Inclusivity. So actually, I have a template that Joe Allen and I were working on last year. We can, and especially now that we have the parent um forums that are going to be going on, we can certainly, I'll circle back with her. Um, and we can get that information up. But yeah, we actually had the whole shell already planned out. Um, it's just kind of, yeah.
Sure, yeah, I think that I did see something, I did a search because I was curious on on our website and I came up with um some information about the committee. And then I went off of it and I couldn't find it again. I didn't know what happened to it. And I was like, there's, there's got to be a better way to. Put it up there because I think, you know, there are a lot of questions in the community and it would be great for people to have a place where they can go and see. You know, the work that has been going on for um over the past few years. Because I think that is something that a number of people are unaware of, that this isn't just something that started in June. But that it has been a process that's been going on for a while.
For sure. It's definitely gone on for a while and it and even the the name itself has evolved, right? Originally, it was sort of a committee. Um, for equity and everybody thought we were just talking about money. So, yeah, um, it's been a long process for sure.
I'm also happy, uh, Dave and and Holly, I'm also happy to share. Uh, some of the documents that detail some more specifics on the titles that we're incorporating. Um, so you have a chance to look at those if you'd like.
That would be great. I would, I would, I would be very interested to see some of those.
And the only other thing I would add to that is if anybody has any ideas or comments or questions that supervisors are here and want to be responsive to those. Questions that parents might have or that you might have. So we encourage people to send us emails to contact us directly. If you have an idea that you think might work or. Some sort of um, you know, something that's happening locally that you think kids should be interested in or should be, you know, exploring, we would be, we would be happy to look at that for sure.
That's great. Thank you. Um, and thank you to all three of you for your presentation tonight and for doing this work. Um, I'm very. Excited about it. Um, and I think uh the rest of the board is as well.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you all for your support.
Um, next on our agenda is our recognition of public comment and we did receive a few comments this evening. The first couple actually uh do pertain to uh the presentation this evening. The first was uh from Nia Hera Santalise who writes. Uh, will students be more directly involved in the decision-making process to change the curriculum such as having a say in how it is approached? What books to add, what topics are taught, et cetera. So um, as long as we have you guys here, I don't know if anyone wants to just have a brief comment about how we're involving. Students in those items.
Well, we've certainly involved students that have been active, um, kids that have already approached us. Some of them are former students who have graduated already or in college. And but some of them are are currently in our buildings now at the high school. Um, but I don't think we have anything formal, Andy. Correct me if I'm wrong. Um, it might be.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, and I, and that's a really great point. I think that that's another thing that needs to go on the column of what we need to work towards. Um, I know in the, in the late. Well, early summer, I guess it was, I met with students from the Amnesty International Group. And that was really um informative for me to hear their their voices and perspectives. So. I think it would be really important to have some, an ongoing mechanism for uh speaking to students or maybe a. A a survey to gather their input. So for sure, that is something I think we need to explore more.
Thank you. Uh, the next comment is from Nyarari Santalise who writes, um, I do think it is important students graduate high school having learned. And deeply understood important historical facts that shaped equity, diversity and inclusion in the United States. Such as the Trail of Tears, the Indian Removal Act, the eighteen ninety massacre at Wounded Knee, the Chinese Exclusion Act. The Immigration and Nationality Act of nineteen fifty two and nineteen sixty five. Ida B. Wells and her investigative reporting in the Red Summer of nineteen nineteen. On the elementary level, students should definitely celebrate the Diversity Month and teachers should plan lessons, including around Martin Luther King Day. We also have a couple of COVID-related questions. And comments that came in. Um, one from Deborah Teigen who writes, due to the increased rate of COVID all around. Would the option for students to go online from now through Christmas holiday be offered? And uh, Dave, I just wanted to clarify, I think, right, if there is a um, a high school or. Or seven through twelve student, or I guess six through twelve student. They could go virtual if they wanted to, right?
Well, so I guess the question sort of depends on grade level. Um, six through twelve can transition remote at any time. Um, they're already here every other day, um, so the model really wouldn't change in terms of what the classroom teacher needs to do. Um, because we are running a standalone virtual learning academy though. Changes at the elementary level can only happen at the quarter marks. Which the next one, um, the effective date would be February first and we'll send information out. Um, in early January on that process as we did um back in October.
If there were a seven through twelve student who wanted to go virtual only from now until, say, Christmas, what is the procedure? What should the parents do?
So they should work through, um, I know Mr. Dommel sent information out, but um, I'll just kind of rephrase it. Basically, they should work with their counselor um first to ensure that, so so some courses, you have to be careful, right? Some of our hands-on courses, um, we really need students to be there at a minimum every other day. Um, or they can't do, like, it's kind of hard to do woodworking if you're never in the building. So just to make sure that there's no scheduling implication, should you decide to do that. But once they clear it through their counselor, their counselor. Lets our registrar know, she puts the icon in Aspen and they're good to go immediately. But they should always work through their counselor first.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, we had a comment from Quinn Tracy as an, as an. As an, as an employee of the school district, I am concerned with the constant rise in numbers, especially among the students. What is your plan of action as the numbers continue to rise? And we had a comment from Christopher Fasano. My son attends Glenmont Elementary and after the recent case report, I have some questions. The language used was Albany County Department of Health has determined that there was possible exposure at school and will quarantine an entire classroom and any close contacts at the school as a result. The date of possible exposure was Friday, November 20th. What is a possible exposure? What does this mean? How is it possible someone was exposed? Second, this possible exposure affected one specific class. Are we not able to receive information about this? Wouldn't we as parents get to determine whether or not our child might have been exposed and consider getting them tested, especially before a holiday where that child will be spending more time with family? I understand HIPAA laws and not knowing the name, but it seems to me that we should be allowed to know where this exposure occurred and allowed to make the determination for ourselves if we consider our child a contact. And Jody, I don't know if you want to comment on that.
Yeah, I, I can actually respond to both of those. So I think that we provide updates to families and staff regularly about concerns about safety. We've gone, high school has gone virtual a couple of times. So, and we work closely with the Department of Health. So in regards to contact tracing, the Department of Health and exposure, so when there's an individual in a building that is becomes positive, let's, let's give a specific example, they become positive. The Health Department, based on research, deems 48 hours prior to that time, there's potentially an exposure. So if someone became positive on a Wednesday, then, and they had, or let's say they became symptomatic on a Wednesday, the Department of Health goes back to 48 hours prior, which is when there's most likely exposure. So the Department of Health is the one that determines based on their investigation, what's the potential date of exposure? And then we work with the Department of Health to give them the contacts for students who are in the classroom. And I think I've mentioned before that Albany County does quarantine entire classrooms or entire buses. They're, they determine that that's close contact and those individuals should be quarantined. Certainly if a parent, if there's a exposure in a school, they can always get their child tested if they're concerned about exposure. But in regards to just being in the same building with someone who has become positive at some point, does not necessarily mean there's an exposure and that's done through all of the documentation that we're required to keep and then provide to the Department of Health. The Department of Health then, following the information we provide, files up with further contact tracing. So they may find, you know, through their investigation that a child was on a soccer team or something outside of school or was at a birthday party over the weekend and there's potential other exposure. But that's the Department of Health's determination and they don't then follow up with the school district about that. But if a parent's concerned about an exposure, they certainly can contact their physician and get a test at any time.
Thanks, Jody. The next comment comes in from Marietta Angelotti. I'd like to request the board review the policies on requiring use of webcams during the six hours of Zoom meetings daily. While it is no doubt helpful for teachers, it can cause harm to students, which should also be addressed and mitigated. There's, please see the attached article that describes some of them. Most districts do not require continuous webcams. Instead, they may require it at the beginning and end of class only or make it voluntary and sometimes use point systems for participation through chat and other measures. Of course, the best measure is one that measures learning rather than simple screen presence. Before we go further into this year, I think there has been enough experience to evaluate its effects and modify the policy as appropriate. Dave, I don't know if you want to just say.
I just want to say, yeah. So teachers do have the flexibility if a student has a particular situation as to why they can't have their camera on. Student should have a discussion with the teacher and, and make other arrangements. But as a general rule, you know, it, it does work best when cameras are on. Research does show that. There's, I would disagree with the fact that many schools don't require cameras on. I'd say it's, you know, at best it's a 50/50 split. In talking with my counterparts, many schools that I'm aware of do require cameras on with exceptions as needed when teachers and students are able to have a conversation around it. We did see last spring that when we did not require cameras, the level of engagement was drastically less than it is right now. And, you know, having the camera on ensures that students are at least somewhat present, right? Once the cameras go off, we had stories of, you know, teachers calling on kids and they wouldn't even reply back. And then come to find out when they check in with the student later, say, oh, I left, you know, I wasn't really even there. I just kind of stayed logged in. So, you know, there, there are benefits to having the camera on. We recognize there are some unique challenges and those challenges to be worked out directly with teachers, but as a general rule, you know, just, it's not a great analogy, but just as we don't really let students sit in the classroom with like bags on their head, there, there is something to be said for eye-to-eye contact and to be able to, you know, interact with folks, not just with the name on the screen.
And I could just add, I've been in several classes at the secondary level where kids are at home and they're not on the screen for six hours a day. That there's frequently the teacher will do an intro, everyone's engaged, then the students at home can turn their cameras off, work on something or they're working with kids in the classroom, you know, or virtually. So I think the the idea that kids are glued to the screen with their cameras on for six hours a day is, is not really an accurate portrayal of what's happening in, in most classes.
Thank you. We also received a comment from Natalie Bordeaux who writes, to whom it may concern on reviewing the December 2nd board agenda, I'm writing regarding the draft policy on anti-racism. As you may be aware, the concept of anti-racism has been wildly, widely debated and is by no means generally accepted by our society as a whole. The federal government was recently ordered to discontinue all anti-racist trainings for employees due to the racist ideas espoused specifically towards white people. The proposed anti-racist policy for this school district similarly singles out white people as to blame for racism, for instance, in your proposed definition of cultural racism. That is, in and of itself, representative of the implicit bias and microaggression which the same draft policy purports to explain. Racism is racism. The law recognizes no distinction between discrimination carried out by one group of people as opposed to other groups. Encouraging or suggesting that only one group of people, namely white people, are capable of discriminating does not foster positive relationships amongst groups. Only further sows division and is an unfair characterization. Is the district seeking to compensate for a problem that has not been identified? Alternatively, if a problem was identified, explain how it was brought to the district's attention and who decided that this was the best way to address it. And I know the policy is on for a second read later on the agenda, so we can have some discussion at that point. Seems appropriate. We do have one more comment from Ethan McHugh who writes, as a student of Bethlehem High School, I have noticed myself and classmates experiencing difficulty finding jobs, internships and community service. COVID-19 seems to be the cause as employers seem less likely to accept applications for internships or jobs. Finding community service is also proving to be a challenge. Quarantining has disrupted the normal atmosphere of normal everyday life. Internships and community service are required for seniors to graduate, at least for lab school. I'm unsure about the rest of the seniors. Action should be taken, should be taken. How can we, meaning the Board of Education or the school, help students in their ability to acquire jobs, internships and community service? So Dave, I, I don't know if you have any thoughts on, I, I would think that probably reaching out to supervisors or counselors would be the best course of action.
Yeah, and I can work with Dave Lindrum to see what this particular situation involves in terms of the lab school. Nick, do you want to speak just a little bit in terms of what studies you're doing?
Yeah, so we minimized, we took the 20 hours and made them into 10 hours and we've been really flexible of how kids could get credit and what they can get credit for. So they can, we've talked about them, you know, mentoring a middle school or a high school or an elementary school student via Zoom or via Google meets. That's a way that they can get their 10 hours in really easily. Helping out a neighbor, doing some shopping for people. There are all sorts of other ways that we would typically not accept in the past. As it's not as civic-minded, I guess is the best way I can put that, but it's still community service and helping out your fellow neighbors. So we've been really, really flexible about that. We've extended. You know, we have kids help us with all kinds of things within the high school itself, but there are ways of getting community service hours that do not require you to go into town and do things like that. Secondly, in terms of internships, it's hard when you're dealing with companies now that are are not as open to interns, but we've actually, Tracy Farrell's done a really, really nice job at figuring out avenues for kids to get the hours working virtually with companies or through companies. So we've actually done fairly well. So I'm not exactly sure what Ethan's, what obstacles are in front of Ethan. I'm not sure what he wants to do, but I know if he just shared it with us, we'd try to help him as best we could. Either through the Counseling Center, through Dave Lindrum, through Tracy somehow. So I'm not really sure what the circumstances are. It has been a little tighter, but if we can get somebody to go to Albany Med into their PA program as an internship, we should be able to get kids other places because the, we just have to follow their protocols. And we ourselves have a lot of protocols in place. I know Jody's been really clear about what our kids can and cannot do and we have to follow those protocols.
Great, thank you. We did also receive two additional comments requesting the removal of Megyn Kelly from the Hall of Fame. I'm not going to read those now. They were quite lengthy. But all of the comments as usual will be attached to the minutes of the meeting and available for everybody.
Holly, those will be forwarded to the Hall of Fame Committee.
I believe one was already copied to them, but the other, and the other one, if it's not, I'll double check and make sure that they receive it. Next on the agenda, item six, action items. It is recommended that the finance action items, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action item one. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items one through eight.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. C, support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items one through four.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items one and two.
So moved.
So moved. Second, did you so move? I'll, I'll second it if you did the first part. Sorry.
Thanks, Chris. I just want to mention that this is the second reading tonight for the new anti-racism policy. And just to reiterate that we started taking a look at this policy when it became really clear, I would say in the spring and the summer that we needed to do more, take more overt actions to address racism in our district. The Policy Committee met and we did have the draft policy reviewed by the district's Equity and Diversity Committee. And the members of that committee were able to give some, give feedback. And we were able to incorporate some of that feedback into the draft before it was put on the agenda last week. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that. And if anybody had anything else that they wanted to discuss before we did a vote on the policy. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item seven, future meetings and events. Our next regular board meeting is on Wednesday, December 16th at seven o'clock, anticipating executive session at six. The meeting following that is on Wednesday, January 6th at seven o'clock, anticipating executive session starting at six. And I'm anticipating that that we will be meeting via Zoom still for both of those meetings. Though we'll have to confirm that the Governor's Executive Order is extended because I believe it was expiring either today or tomorrow. And then on Monday, January 11th at six o'clock, we have a Policy Committee meeting. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.